Scott Ward, roll call, Matt and Clay.
Here.
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 Clay and Case.
Yes, sir.
Please prepare for the invitation.
Let us pray. God, we thank you for this thing, we thank you for this great opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for these leaders in this city. We all want the same thing, we all want to succeed and to continue to live and have great lives here in this city. So, we pray for wisdom for this group, we pray to God that he would lead us, thank you for the successes, and God help us with the opportunities that we have ahead of us. Bless this time together tonight, we ask and beg these things in Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Phil, one please rise, place the flag for the state of the nation. I'm sorry, please believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the approval of the bill.
I'll make that motion on the throne today, there was nothing to use it on.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. And Jennifer has the bills with it, we have unfinished business, we have Fairway Signs is here, and we taped the motion last time, I didn't get a chance to change it on the agenda today, but it is unfinished business. Y'all should've gotten some information about two weeks ago, talks like the safety from the highway standpoint. So, we would actually have to do a motion and a second when we discuss it.
Make motion.
I have a motion, bring it off table.
Second.
Any second, I have a second. Discussion?
We've talked about this signage, and what we're worried about, it's gonna be right and directly in front of it, is state highway property. And I think we could address that up, which is some problems that we have, we're worried about property, and we've got so many feet off the road, so we don't have a problem. What we were discussing before.
You mean a problem for us to put our sign in?
Yeah.
Well, I think we will have to be, unless we're just gonna put a sign in. Our thoughts were to put a nice little area in front of it, or a nice little area, and it'll set off off through the property.
I don't want the roadway is there, but we've got room to do it, I think, if we're researching.
Okay. I went to them, they sent us a map, and it said it was 11, no, I'm sorry, 22 feet from the middle of the posted lane, which states it's about a foot and a half off the backside of the sidewalk. So, you want to have it engineered, surveying?
Well, I'm not, well, we've talked about it, I'd like to. I would say we should have it engineered. No, but well, man, it is to our advantage. When we're talking about having, one time we had a picture of a rock wall decorative welcome to Prestonburg.
That was in the email, they sent it to you.
Yeah, and so far off the. Sign behind the sidewalk. Right. And I think we've got room for it, without any obligation anybody has. You're saying, without partnering with? Yeah, right, I don't think we need to have a partner, I think that we can put our own. Sign it, and that packet, did it say that there were big old signs there?
Yes.
Yes. I think we need to address that there was a big old signs there.
That's on the highway.
Same people, same. Who's those wanting to man?
They wanted a different assortment, we've already addressed that with the highway department, it's been turned over, it's been turned over to their lotters.
Because that's on their.
That's on their lotta rappers.
Okay, Sam, we're talking about flashes, and brings your attention, in other words, the traffic coming in, we're looking at sign, not the red lights, right?
Well, we have an offset from the plan, that isn't right.
Yeah, we'll lay up a little bit of steel, it's noticeable, it first flash and lapse. And if you're talking about a lap lit sign, or an on lit sign, which one are you talking about?
Well, you're talking about a rolling sign.
Right.
Really, it definitely flashes, as much as it rolls.
Okay. Sort of like the one at Arch Park?
Yes.
Okay. Flash, like in your picture, dog picture.
So, have they offset it from the red light more than what it was?
Yes, they put, they just, well, I tell you what, Scott, you're here. Scott, can you bring Scott a mic, let Scott tell us about it?
No.
No, we'll do ourselves that favor.
That's a good thing.
Hello, I'm Scott Fergalo, I'm the general manager of Fairway, I could address any questions. The rendering that we did, we offset it more to the left for y'all, I'm hoping that y'all saw that when we sent it over in the packet, it was further to the left to give some spacing between the existing traffic light, and what we're contemplating putting down that hole. That was the question.
Yes. Just beside the main street there, right?
Correct.
You're as far as you can go to the left.
It was a rough rendering, what I would like to do is put it as far over as we can, because I don't want any blending with the existing traffic light. We've probably got a little bit more to give, but I don't want to overhang the street.
Yeah, but if you're coming into town, it'd be on the left-hand side, right?
Because you're looking right at it, it'd be offset to the left, that's correct.
Okay.
And the terminology for it would be intermittent change, it doesn't flash, it just blinks from one to another every nine.
But it gets your attention, right?
It does.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
And the state, is, they're okay with it?
They aren't.
We still have to.
See, we have to go back on that property, on the private property, that's only one that they have led, or one of their led, yes, because I haven't worked out that deal yet. But you've got to take care of the way they're siding, as long as the sign is there, as long as that sign is.
Why would you think that it's okay, I think it's fine.
I have no problem with he goes from five signs down to one.
It cleans it up.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion, we accept it. And, oh, I'm sorry about that, that's how far I'm lying.
So, you want to have it surveyed before we do this?
Yeah, I just don't want to encumber us too long financially, to take care of those arrangements, if we can, if we're not required to do that, you know what I'm saying, if we're not required to have to do easements, further easements.
We could put a sign in there, but right to the sidewalk, it'll be that on the backside sidewalk, we want to have about maybe a foot behind the trees, well, not on that, but they send us, so that would be a pretty narrow foundation, we can do that, but there's not going to be room in front of it, or anything to do. Our thoughts was, put it in there, put two benches on each side, which people actually sit there. We gotta be quick on the feet.
Okay.
So, we're okay with the sign, that they live it? We're not okay with any other agreements until we have it surveyed?
Well, I'm not much on covering. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not for signing it, because somebody's, and I'm not, you know, to be honest, I'm not real crazy about the sign itself, because we can put our decorative piece up, and you know, I don't know what the true answer to it is.
What do you mean a decorative piece?
The wall, the. The presses, well, the presses.
That's what they're gonna build for us.
Right.
It is a decorative piece that you're talking about.
Yeah.
That's the whole point, right?
Well, I'm awful at getting it cleaned up, I just, I don't want to be encumbered financially for an internal date that we don't know about at this time, because we don't know how long the sign has lasted, we don't know, you know, the length of time, makes it difficult.
Well.
We would need a finite timeframe.
I'd go back and try to renegotiate, see what we come up with.
Once again, I think we're all agreed, the signage will look better, because we, the city will have a sign, the only problem I have is encumbering ourselves for, and if the timeframe, we don't know that, then definitely.
Well, I'll be honest with you, with the weeks said right now, if we can get that sign in there, I'd sign up, I'd do it myself, cut the greens. It's just, you're talking about 30 minutes, maybe, a couple times a week during the summer, that's what he wants to be, for us to get an easement on his property. So, I mean, whatever y'all want to do, we can go ahead, they can move forward with the sign, but I don't know how far they're gonna go without the whole deal being replaced, because that's what he's gonna be done, unless they want it.
I think we need to renegotiate, see what we can do, instead of the city being encumbered to do it.
So, you guys understand what the O-Gil is here at, they're gonna put a sign up, they're gonna build our sign for us, and put it in place.
Which is a block and mortar wall, somewhere in the vicinity of five feet tall.
Yep, block and mortar wall, oh, nine yards.
How many feet long, how wide?
Well, it's about, we haven't even got that far yet, it's about 40 feet, that's what it has to be.
So, it covers most of that area?
Yes, it will be dead and empty. Alright, we'll go back and renegotiate, we'll have to.
I think we're still able to, we're gonna have to, hey, table them, we're calling for the vote, I think that Scott would be willing to sit down and see what we could do to negotiate, they would also be included, not just the city negotiating, because this isn't just a one, this isn't a two-person deal, this is a three entity deal.
My goal is to get that sign, you know, at no cost to the city.
That's still going.
And, we're cleaning up the intersection, we're cleaning up, we're going from five signs, billboards, down to one.
But we're also having a definite timeframe, that we are to cut graves at work, we were told by the League of Cities attorneys that it was never been done, but it's not, actually, you know, it's.
His exact wording was, I don't see nothing illegal with it, before the veteran of the city, I don't see a problem.
That's the exact wording. He's a butt. Yeah, there's a but there, there's no written terminology saying you can do this, you can't do this.
If you go back to renegotiations, what is the renegotiation gonna be, I'm not clear on that, what are we renegotiating?
Basically, I'm gonna tell them, if we can't cut his grass, I still have to be able to ride away, how much it gonna cost us?
He's already said no, right?
He's not interested in money.
He's not interested in money.
No, I mean, because he already said that that was the deal.
That was, that's pretty much the deal, yeah. I can go back and try again, but.
Well, that's just not, we still have to vote, I mean, that's, I think, we've got a first and second, Mr.
Are you calling for vote?
I'm not calling for vote, first and second.
Alright, first, second, alright. I ain't gonna make your motion, who made the motion on that?
Thank you.
Because I'm gonna have to go back and renegotiate, see what we can. Who made the motion?
Oh, it said, motion's already made behind that note, but.
That's been framed on table, the motion we feel was to agree to the, agree to the negotiation as it was, now you want to make a motion that the negotiation without the third party getting the benefit of the grades, right?
I don't think that's what it is, I guess, trying to see if we can't get a definite term, because, like, I believe Jennifer said, yeah, we can't, well, we can't do it for so many years.
Twenty year.
Yeah, 20 years is.
Is it, is it what it is?
20 years, motion, go.
Yeah, that's.
Hold on.
Hold on.
I'll tell you what, once some of y'all join the board with me, y'all negotiate with me. Who I got to go and negotiate with, Dave, Jack, two of you?
I think another way is, what's the savings we're gonna get out of the sign, versus what it costs us to do it? We're talking, sign.
Sign.
Might be a good deal for the city, to cut the gray side, because that's what I, that's what I'm thinking, obviously.
Well, I didn't think it's really good.
It's about a lot of time in exchange, or service, it probably has to be money, it could be services in exchange, I agree, it has to be a term, I don't think we can agree to anything, that can't have a contract, it goes on the radio. If we get a term, maybe what I would like to see, the term is, is make sure that what we're paying for, we're talking about.
If the cost allocation for both should be even.
And I'm still here today, I don't know what it's going to cost us to do this between the years, versus what savings we're gonna get out of it, whether the sign is, if it matches up, or particularly close, or if we're gonna get such a benefit out of what we're getting, I'm for it. If it's gonna be, it's gonna cost us in excess over the 20 years, then I would have a problem, and I apologize, I don't know.
How can we delineate those numbers indirectly, or directly?
I guess what I'm saying, I don't say that nobody can scrap that over here, I'm saying they, they have a little more information on that part, than what's at Smit. Smit's a wall, we're gonna do as hard as we finish product and sign up, save it as well, without, with a agreement along the way, it's a good line, so.
You want to table it again, to the next meeting?
I would bet that it was best brought out, I don't want anybody saying.
So, you don't need my, I don't have a big cost to the sign.
I mean, if Scott gives cost, I think it's more than a timeframe, the good needs to delineate the cost for us cutting the grass.
I think we could do that, but I think, I think we need to tell them, but to be able to reassure everybody that what we're doing is good and good by.
Okay.
I'll get Richard to come back, tell someone to take the waves, and the cost of each time.
Alright, every other week, from May to August.
On to September.
Okay, May to September.
September.
Alright, I have a motion to table.
Motion to table.
I have a motion, you second.
Second.
I don't think, retake it.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Alright. New business, we have a Green Dot City proclamation. Be a pro claim, whereas the city of Prestonburg is asking community members to take a stand against violence, and begin making a difference in our community, and in the lives of those around you, and, whereas, being a Green Dot is having discussion with friends and family members concerning violence prevention, and, whereas, being a knowledgeable resource for victims, and whereas, believing that violence against another person is wrong, and saying it out loud, and whereas, a single choice in one moment in time, to use your voice, actions, or choices to make one small corner of the world safer. Therefore, I, as stable mayor of the city of Prestonburg, do hereby proclaim, this month, which is September, that's right, September, September 2018, the Green Dot City Month. And we will become a Green Dot City, sending his signs, matter.
We're waiting on that first order, kind of like you're trying to.
You want this?
Actually, if you want to frame it, or what do y'all want to do with it, hang on, we've got it. Thank you.
Flip here. To whom all these, to whom all these persons shall come, whereas Russell May, 1921 to 1990, a native of Prestonburg, a prolific artist of notoriety, who dedicated his life to painting scenes of Floyd Canyon, and areas close to home in his idyllic impressionistic style, may gain the respect of the art world through museum exhibitions, gallery exhibitions, and private sales of his works. Whereas, May's life is one of inspiration, as he traveled to Europe at age 50, to pursue his dream of becoming a fine art painter, he studied under the tutelage of the famous Austrian Impressionist painter, Gerhard Meswadle. This transformational experience launched the style and subject matter that is now synonymous with Russell May Art. Whereas, May returned home to Prestonburg to establish his studio and gallery, changing careers at age 50, and reinventing himself as a fine art painter. May provoked, may prove to the region, and beyond, that a career in art was feasible with determination and hard work. The May Art Gallery was born as the exemplar of talent, innovation, and with the freedom to create. Whereas, May is to be celebrated as an iconic Floyd Canyon, or his contributions, to preserving and documenting a biocultural era in perpetuity of Central Appalachia, through the subject matters of his landscape paintings. Whereas, in a 14-year period, 75 through 89, May published an outstanding 59 limited edition prints, many of which are coveted collector's items. Whereas, even as May's popularity grew, and his time was in great demand, he always welcomed his community into his studio in Prestonburg. His generosity of his talents and time made him a great teacher of art. Whereas, May's paintings have only appreciated in value on the natural art market, national art market, his contributions to the art world are only now becoming fully regarded. With growing interest in May's accomplishments, Central Appalachia is gaining great respect with such respect are coming into an art market renaissance, and May's popularity as an international artist is growing. It is only fitting that we, as Central Appalachians, work to understand more about May's role in the artistic world as Central Appalachia's premier Impressionist painter. Proclaim this 21st day of September, 2018. Now, approved resolution number 06-2018.
Whereas, civic's education in Kentucky schools is important to ensure future generations are engaged and involved in our local community and its governance.
Alright, I need a motion.
So, move.
I need a second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. This probably should've been on the unfinished business, but we've discussed it through the discussion of opioid, I'll see. Just so there's no question for you guys to understand, this has half the information we'd be turning over to them after it's redacted, that's just half of it, they're still working on the other half. Of opioid investigations, overdoses, illnesses, or complaints from people on pills, as opposed to alcohol. So, we need to get in front of this before they declare, before they go to court, if they actually have a remanding, or a final verdict.
This is going for a judge.
This is going for a judge, only in Ohio, not here, but in Ohio, federal lawsuit. We had the group come in and forth, can you think of the man right now?
Brian.
Brian Wiles, that's the only ones we had, make the presentation so far. Y'all want to join in on the lawsuit, or not? I need a motion and a second, join in on, and I need a, I need a motion to join, either with this group, or another group, wherever y'all want to do it.
I'll make the motion, I sat in on that, there's four of us that sat in on it. I'm gonna go on for joining in on it, but I'd like to use somebody hopeful here to kill it.
Well, yeah, it's full of them, you're talking about federal lawsuits, it's one type of millions and millions and millions of dollars.
It's specialized. Generally, those type of things, you're talking about the class action topic, you're gonna get rid of the guys, they've got the resources and groups together, and all your orgs.
They are not going to charge us, it's not the type of thing, we're.
There are seven states, was it, seven states right now, have 32 pending actions on these ones.
That's in Kentucky.
Yeah, at that time, in Kentucky.
Yeah, it's in Kentucky.
I don't think anything else is going to happen, I just asked.
I'll make the motion.
If we had someone that had that many taxes here, I could tell them they definitely would go with it, because they get that to within them, don't they?
I second you.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll let them know tomorrow. Alright, lease agreement, what, due to an emergency that came up with a family member, Jennifer can't be here, but she's been working on the lease, the basic of the lease is, they're gonna take over, they won't pay us a dollar a year, they're gonna, they're gonna have access to all properties, excluding one fourth acre around the waste treatment plant this year. They will take over all liability, they will benefit us, it's got all that in the lease, but she's been working that this lease, and she had an emergency family that couldn't be here.
So, this is property, the city.
This is property, the city has acquired this property, it was granted as part of the waste treatment plant, we're utilizing about maybe a half acre, we're gonna get an extra half acre, a fence around and everything, there's about 29 more or less acres there and there, they butted right up the way, the way it's gone up through, we'll utilize it where otherwise it's just sitting there.
Final terms in the lease agreement, you all have an agreement, all terms?
Yes.
So, we're just waiting to the final draft of it?
Yes, that's it.
I'd like to see the final draft, and read through it, and I'll anticipate the forms, so I'd like to see it before.
I have a vote to prove. You would have, not ready to come on. Alright, table it. I need a motion, table it.
Make the motion, table it.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor? All opposed. Open bid's a recycling truck.
Okay, the first one is Lexington Truck Sales. Okay, we're looking at $96,850. Isuzu.
2019 Isuzu.
2019 Isuzu.
Is there any more?
Yep, one more. Uh, this one is municipal equipment incorporated out of Louisville.
Is it 88?
88,947.
Ronnie's here, Ronnie?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ronnie, look at them, and make sure that you both look at them, even once, I think you realize, if you suspect, so. Let's hold off before we actually hold on, let's give it a minute.
Say you had a.
Isuzu, is it? Isuzu was named.
Lexington Trucks.
Lexington Trucks.
Oh, that one, okay, they bid it. They'd be able to.
You want to be one thing, Carrie, you need to let us know if you're working on. Alright. We'll pass over that for right now, let him look at it. First reading of orders, number 12-2018.
An ordinance of the city of Prestonburg, Kentucky, amending the ordinance creating a Prestonburg utility commission in 1956, to change the number of commissioners to serve compensation.
Alright, first reading of orders, number 13-2018.
An ordinance of the city of Prestonburg, Kentucky, relating to a tax levy on real intangible personal property and franchises, all for the general operating expense purposes of the city of Prestonburg, Kentucky.
This is one that we have to do every year before the taxes comes out, unless you have a side thing, something completely different, I see no reason for us to raise taxes, we'll do a separate reading at the next one. Now. Now, fun part. Yearly, I am required by law to do a address, for lack of a better term, about what's going, what's been going on in the city, how it physically, and I mean that F-I-L-C-A-L-L-Y, not physically. That's how we did last year. In a nutshell, we came in, just about every department come in under budget. I'm going to brag on something, some of them individually before we go any farther. The Archer Park played a major role in restoration of the Jenny Wiley Amphitheater. Ten thousand dollars in grant funding from the Floyd Canyon Tourism and the Prestonburg Tourist, five thousand each. The amphitheater was going to be closed down. Uh, the money coming out of those grants and our, our labor, it was not in Archer Park, it was Archer Park Fire Department. It was Public Works, it was City Utilities, it was landscaping. I think just about every department had a large part of working on that and trying to get it to a place where we would have a, uh, we'd be able to keep it open and we'd be able to extend the season from the end of August. We're having a concert this coming weekend, uh, twenty-second, it's a blues concert. It's going to be in coordination, for lack of a better term, with the Russell May, uh, exhibition. Mount Mark Center, they were a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars higher in revenue, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars higher in ticket sales. They got a new lighting board, new microphones, and also got a new switcher. Is that right, Mike, Robert?
Splitter, yep.
Splitter, okay, splitter. It's a splitter. So, uh, they were able to come in still thirty-six thousand dollars under budget and still able to buy us new equipment. They'd never be able to do that for you. Stomp Chris had a bunch of stay-in-play packages bringing people in from out of the area, a hundred and eighty-one packages, uh, bringing in six hundred and thirty-eight nights in Prestonburg Hotels. Seventy-seven thousand dollars in new hotel revenue. Tourism, eighty-three thousand dollars higher in total hotel revenue. They had twenty-five tour groups with thirty to sixty people on each bus. Night markets starting back, well, we, that started back in the spring, we've had two this fall. The fire department has started a new junior fire department program and they're now part of the fire life community, which gives us access to a lot more funding and grants and things that we can move forward with what they have. I think they put a lot of signs up, a lot of, uh, a lot of address numbers on houses. They've also put in, I think it was about three hundred carbon monoxide. Is that the way it was, chief? Correct. The police department has obtained a hundred thousand dollar radio grant, so we upgraded our radio system, including our towers and other peters, and they got two new police cruisers. Those two Dodges in this last year we had coming in. So they did really well, but when I look down through here and I see a dispatches two percent under budget, Public Works, which is Ronnie, he come in sixteen percent under budget, that doesn't sound that impressive. That's a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So you got all these units coming in, we actually come in under budget over off of the whole, uh, year. We are getting physically sound, so we can start moving forward more and more. A lot of the monies that we've been able to come up with and be able to do projects with has been designated funding. Uh, we have two projects going on in Tremble Branch. We now have maps of what they're going to be doing and they will be letting out the bids for Tremble Branch. We've got a finalized map on it, the elevations and everything. Within the next couple of weeks, Tremble Branch, I'm sorry, May's Branch is about six weeks behind it. So that's going to take a little while. This is federal FEMA money and we've worked as quickly as we can and pushed as hard as we can. It just takes a while. We also have a new program that we're going to be rolling out in October. It's called Rave nine-one-one. It's, uh, it's active now. We'll start out, we'll put some advertisements out to see some social media stuff. And we're going to ask the press to come see us in the second week of, uh, of October, which is Jenny Wiley Festival week. Come out and see us. We're going to have a booth there. What it is for, Rave nine-one-one, it's going to simplify people getting a hold of nine-one-one. Right now, if you dial nine-one-one from your cell phone right here, all they know is you dialed nine-one-one. They don't know where you're at. If you set up and you register for this system, you're going to be getting a, uh, you're going to fill out some information. They're going to put it into the big data bank where anywhere in the United States, Rave nine-one-one is. Wherever your phone calls from, it's going to give them that. That's where you're at. They're going to be able to pull you up on GPS. So if you're at work and they have places on there where you can put, um, work during the days, on the home, it tells about medications, it tells about what you're going to be, uh, if you have any, um, diseases, they need to know about going in. If you have heart problems, if you have epilepsy, they're going to know before they get there. Now with that added to some of that, here's a police store on the top. They have an address, they have a name. They can actually build up on that. Uh, they can put it into private remarks on that level. He's been, he's fought police before. Uh, he's a convicted felon. They can get this information out to the police officers, to the EMS quicker, so they can do, be more beneficial to you when they get there. Uh, it's going to be the first week in October, it's going to be rolling out at the, we're going to have a booth at the Jenny Wiley Festival. You should come to see it. It's, uh, it's going to be, this will be, uh, one of the biggest levels of improvement in our nine-one-one system that y'all have ever seen. So, Rave nine-one-one's got a lot of other stuff going on. We will be coming out. Uh, third week in October, we're going to be registered at some of the senior citizens, senior citizen centers and low-income housing apartments. And then the fourth week of October, we'll be available at City Hall. And you can go online and do this for yourself. I did to an extent, and it's not that hard, even for somebody who's has struggled with that as much as I did. So one, two other things we're going to discuss real quick. One is the Jenny Wiley Festival. There's pamphlets here, y'all need to grab it. It's going to be outstanding this year. The, uh, music is going to be a step up, a lot of local music, a lot of religious music. And on Saturday, there's going to be some, uh, the parade. There's going to be a new log rolling. Is that what it is, Jennifer? Lumberjack. It's lumberjack after. They're going to have a pool set. They're going to do log rolling. They're going to do this. So there's going to be some new stuff coming in. The Indians, the Native Americans will be there for powwow. There's going to be a cruise in. There's going to be a lot to do during the holidays during the Jenny Wiley Festival. You need to come see us. And again, the music is going to be outstanding. The Restless Heart is going to be our, uh, our final show that night. They've had, they had a lot of good music out in the nineties, two thousands. Very worthwhile to come watch them. So in the interim, stuff going on till then, on Friday the twenty-first, first, there's a Russell May dinner. So you can, uh, it's to make money for the Russell May exhibition and for what we're trying to do with it. It's at the convention center. They have an event page on Facebook. Then on the twenty-second, we've got, which is Saturday, we've got Paddle Fest, we've got the Russell May exhibition. Then we have Brandon King Crossroads. We'll have five bands there for a blues competition. There'll be some craft beer and a wine mix coming in out of Frankfurt set up. Uh, there's going to be a lot going on this week and a lot will be, going to be going on to the end of Jenny Wiley Festival. You need to come out and join us, come out and have some fun. With that being said, I kept it short and sweet because we had so much more in the meeting. Floor's open for discussion. If you want to say something, ask something, raise your hand, I'll bring a mic around to you.
Just a couple of questions, mayor.
Okay.
Sunday alcohol sales, you know what revenue that's generated so far for us? And do you think that the public should have had a voice in that decision on having Sunday alcohol sales?
Well, you know, it's a good question. I don't know whether or not I can find that out for you. I don't care bit to let you know. Should the public have had a, the public had an opportunity to come to the meeting and discuss it. Just like this meeting, we asked people to come to everyone. Only a few people did. When it's brought forward, council voted. That being said, what I did, what I worried about more of all was DUIs, domestics, alcohol-related problems from fights and stuff carrying on. They went down. I do know that. So as far as that goes, I think that we should give them ample opportunity to come forward, council talk. Everybody had an opportunity. Council voted on it, so.
So you're saying the people shouldn't have had a chance to vote on it at the ballot?
No, what I'm saying is the people did have an opportunity to, to come and talk. Come talk a lot, convince the council.
Next question. What about the convention center or the community center that, that you purchased? What's going on with that? Where's that at? And, uh, is there anybody leasing any parts of that right now from the city?
What we're doing right now is we're trying to find funding for it. It's going to take six to seven million dollars to develop that. That's a lot of money. There's not a lot of money out there right now, federal or state. I am hitting everybody up I can trying to find funding. Is there people leasing? Yes, there is. We got sign guys leasing a room and then we also have about probably another ten or twelve people that are storing boats and they're storing RVs there to try to bring some, bring some income in on it, white sets there.
What about the streets and the sidewalks and some of the parts of town that's in disrepair and weeds growing up, such as the golf course? What's the plan on fixing that?
Well, it's the plan we've had all year and every year I've been in, in the, uh, in my administration. Every fall we do this. We can do it in the middle of summer. It's not effective. We can see the rain or it's too hot, we'll get out and work. Every fall we've done this work. I very, we very, Ronnie and I very went out at least three times throughout the year, looked at holes, looked at speed bumps we need to return. We've also looked at sidewalks. We have them all marked and scheduled and ready to go. But it's something we do later in the year when it's cooler.
What's your guys' plan of action on all these businesses closing in town? It looks like towns collapsing around this area.
Hey, hey, look, I understand what you're doing. You're wanting to make a political stand here.
No, sir, I'm just asking if.
No, really, it's a political stand and that's fine, but you're more than asking them or you asking me?
I'm asking you.
You're asking me. Well, let me tell you. There's nothing I can do about the economy. Not a thing in the world I can do about the economy. When I started this job, I was long, I was in the breed and depot. I had to dig out of it. I dug out of it. We're starting to turn around now. We're starting to make some progress. It doesn't happen overnight. Now I know what your next response is probably going to be, but what about that industrial side? They're popular. Look what they got going on. Do you have any idea when they started that industrial side?
Mayor, I'm just asking you a question.
Nineteen years ago. So we don't turn around and you can't turn a business around in three or four of that years and start moving forward. It takes some time.
That's why I'm asking what's your plan? I'm asking your plan.
My plan? The Gusche Chiefs plan right there. We're trying to bring tourism in here. We're trying to set a small economy up of tourism. We had thirty people on our trails this weekend. We had people coming to the town just to see the town. We have people coming to ride bikes. We have people who come to do that. That is low-hanging fruit. It was inexpensive for us to do and we got people in here. Now we've got seventeen small businesses started in the last two and a half years. As small businesses. It's going to take time before we can go into the bigger businesses.
I just wanted to mention though that we have several new small businesses in town. Just a few that I've thought, just thought of sitting here. Wildfire Designs, Swedish Cupcakes, The Mountain Muse, Flawless Beauty, Riker and Riley's. Those are just a couple of off of them. The, the new running company store. There's several new businesses in, in downtown Prestonburg that are all doing very well.
And I'm, and I promise you, I'm not trying to be a political speech here. Because I know you want, you say you want it to be a bedroom community and you want people to go to Potville. And that's fine.
I want people to go to Potville?
You said that we could be the bedroom and they can work in Potville.
Sure.
But the only thing about that is, is when you're out in the community, you see more of our sales signs at these homes than you see my campaign signs or your campaign signs combined. Our people are leaving.
Again, the economy's made a big downturn. I had to call it out in the middle of it. I had to dig us out of the hole. I got us out of the hole and we'll make the return. As many as these houses or people are leaving, there's people coming back, but we got to give them something to come back to. That's what I'm trying to strive for. I'm trying to strive to give these people. We had a lot of young people who had moved back from Lexington, from Louisville, from Cincinnati area because of this stuff to do here. Now second thing we have to do is we have to get fiber outlets in place. We have no choice. I've been trying my best to work deals on that. I've been in more meetings on fiber. I know a lot more about fiber than I ever wanted to know about fiber. But until we find some way to find the money, there's no way to do it. So we're being physically sound, as you could tell from what we did. We're trying to get our money, put our money where we need to, so we can grow.
Last question, I promise. North Floyd Fire Department, what is that? What's the plans on that? The status? And where does those tax dollars go?
What tax dollars you talking about? North Floyd?
Yes.
Goes to train, air fire department. Who answers the calls in North Floyd.
Is there a plan on, in putting in a new fire department?
Well, I'm glad you asked that because we've already purchased the property. We've already got the plans laid out where we're going to put it. Our biggest problem right now is the design we're going to put up there and which truck we're going to put up there. So it's just going to be a matter of time before we get that in place. Property's already bought. It's already ready to go. Just a matter of getting a place where we are physically able to ready to do it. Now we could probably do it this fall. Just to give you an idea of how government works, certain periods of time, money gets tighter. So we're a lot more frugal with our money. Summertime is more of a time. Because we have to have more labor to be able to take care of the city like we want to do, like we want it to look good. We want to see the pretty flags. We want to see things look good. So it takes a little more money. As that labor force loosens up in the fall, we start losing some of our part time, then we're starting to be able to come back to more projects. Thank you. Yes, mayor?
I just wanted to clarify, when he was talking about Sunday alcohol sales. I know this came up when we were voting on it in front of the city council. We had, we had a couple of citizens saying that they would then take their sales on Sunday to Potville.
If I'm not mistaken, Prestonsburg was the last because we tried to hold out as long as we could. Paintsville and Potville had alcohol sales on Sunday long before we did.
As did Martin.
As did Martin. And I'm, and I'm not, I'm not saying pro con, nothing. The only person, there was one citizen the day that we voted, if I'm not mistaken, that came to the city council meeting after it had already been in the paper, on Facebook, talked about, that said, please don't do this. I'll take my business to Potville. He was saying he would take his business to a, to a municipality that had already voted ten years before to have Sunday alcohol sales.
I have a question. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty had asked about why the citizens didn't get a vote. That's not a valid initiative.
That is not a valid initiative.
So that's why the citizens didn't get a vote.
The citizens' right to tell their, their elected officials, we are a mayor, council, form of government. We are not a commissioner, form of government. The mayor honestly could have done this on his own. He chose in his transparency to put it on the agenda for a city council ballot. He didn't have to do that. He chose to do that. We, we put it in the paper for weeks prior to you all voting on it and we had one citizen come to the meeting.
Any other questions? Good.
This is, uh, open to all of the council. Thank you. Uh, just want to know what parts of the strategic plan are currently being implemented? Um, and what the insights you can give on that?
Alright, um, let's start with one. If you register strategic plan, and I have some up here for people who have it. It says that we should try to increase our outdoor activity, our eco-tourism, adventure tourism, and we should get the amphitheater enough money. We've done that. We've actually taken a lease with the parks on it. We have that in our control now. We've, uh, we're starting to make money off of it. We've had two shows there since the Jenny Wiley Theater and we're going to have our third one this weekend. So we're moving forward. We're already scheduled for next spring in the amphitheater. So that's one of them. The second is they want us to increase our marketing on our trail system. Uh, we've done that in the fact that you would see more targeted social media and tourism has gotten involved and they've started helping us really start getting it out there to the other areas, having like Frankfurt, Louisville, uh, up around the Cincinnati area. They have trail systems already in place. We're starting to advertise in those areas. This weekend we had a minimum of thirty people, I'd say. Me going, no, okay. Brendan, was you on trail this weekend? There was a minimum of thirty people. I know there's eleven in one group, by minimum. I know there's eleven in one group that I remember was coming in town. They eat in restaurants, they stay in motels, they stay at campgrounds, they're staying somewhere in town. So we're in the process of setting up a tourist economy, and you know, people's gonna say, oh, it's never gonna place code. Unless we find a vein of gold somewhere inside of Prestonsburg, there's no way that we're gonna be able to get an economy that's gonna match with code until we make ourselves clean, pretty, safe, and you gotta have something to do.
Technological.
That's what, technological, we've got, we've got technological advances we're working on. We're working on a words for Southern Link right now to try to hold their feet to the fires and do more customer service. Everybody thinks they have an exclusive franchise with us, they don't. It's just hard to get other franchises to come in and step in. Is there any questions?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Chief.
Can I elaborate on that, about the alcohol?
Yes, sir.
I had our dispatch, one of our dispatches pull back. Oh, by the way, I'm Larry Woods, Galloway County Chief Police here in Prestonsburg. I had to go back six months for impaired driving arrest. Out of forty-six of those arrests, four were alcohol-related. So I thought you ought to know that. Until the citizens of Prestonsburg get behind us and help us with the people that's dealing drugs here in this town, we're doing all we make buys every day, but without your help still, we're out there fighting a losing battle. But four were alcohol-related. So alcohol's not our problem in this town as to drugs. That's all I got to say. Any questions?
Any other questions? We go? Over here.
I've always been an advocate for, you know, trying to do something down at the college as far as a stage in that area. I know the National Department for the Arts, you know, has a lot of grants, monies that they'll get for and stuff like that. But I've always been an advocate somewhere over there around by the Blue Bridge, which is the bridge going out of town there by the college, of putting in a band shell. I think that would increase our culture, we'd have a lot of things we could do down there. We could have election Philharmonic come up, we could have a lot of different groups come in, we could have a lot of concerts, weekend concerts, things of that nature. But I always, always thought that we should have a band shell down there. We'd be the only one, I think, in Eastern Kentucky that would have one. And I know the National Department for the Arts got a lot of money, and if we could find some way to write a grant, get the money, I think that'd be a big improvement for our little town.
I can run that through the college, of course, that's the college's property and you have to go through them. I will say that the amphitheater has created interest in music other than just country music, just bluegrass music, just blues music. They've actually been reaching out to the Mountain Arts Center now that they know the Mountain Arts Center can schedule things there more than, more so than we did before. We, we only used it two months before when the theater had complete control of it. Now we can use it six other months of the year to try to get stuff in. So pretty simply, what's gonna happen is that we've got other groups that are contacting, they're wanting to do concerts over there, and it's, it's got as good acoustics as any place around with the trees around it. So for right now, we'll have to live with that. I suggested to the college, let them start looking for it, but understand that the partnership we have with the college for here also relates to the amphitheater. So we do have it, it's just not on their property right.
There again, I think that'd be a good thing to pursue, and because for one thing, you've got a lot more room down there, you've got the green space if they wanna have picnics before the show, you've got plenty of parking, things of that nature, it would allow to get bigger shows in. You are kinda limited over the amphitheater and some of our other venues, how many people you can get in, but I think the band shell would be a great, great feature for our little town.
That's something I'll definitely take to the presidency, see what we can do.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else? Nobody else has any questions? I need that motion.
No, you don't, they're back orchestrate first.
Oh, they're back orchestrate, oh, did he bring one?
The one he does.
Oh, you like that?
You like that?
All right, I'll make a motion. I got a motion to accept the quote from Municipal Equipment Company, Inc. I need a second.
I have a second.
I have a second. I'm favored?
Aye.
I'll oppose.
There's another new business, I'd like to, is there any way that we can put signs out on US 23? The state's obviously not assisting us with putting signs out. We all seen the Jenny Wiley signs on Watergate Road?
What did you say there? I'm not a colleague in this place. Even the one going down, even the one going down the Watergate Road, it's horrible.
It's actually just great, it's, it's, but I'm talking about on US 23. Can we put signs up out there promoting eateries, places to visit?
At the same time, I'm asking to do them for the trails, for the restaurants, for some of the more unique places we have here.
We have thirty-six thousand, forty thousand visits a day on US 23, we need to find a way to drive those into town.
I agree.
We have two entrances within three miles.
I have DM brands blocking the road. Yeah, stubborn, yeah, you can't get lunch. No, I, I noticed that one's come back from store conference, and I noticed those signs are, so I'll be in contact with you. So we'll be getting those fixed quickly, I hope.
Fair enough, we could do it on our own outside of them, make it a little more eclectic, a little different than what a state sign, a state, a state sign.
They have so many restrictions at sign to go by on 23 because it's either a natural route.
It's scenic route.
Yeah, it's scenic route, it's just, it's, it's tough. We just, yeah, they should be, but we should be getting those one of them, 'cause I noticed it coming back at once, it's going off.
Trees are hanging over it.
Yeah. Any else? I need that motion. Motion to make here, is there any second? I'm favored? I'll oppose.
And I'm the director of a residential treatment program called Serenity House, and I am, we treat pregnant women who are currently using substances, excuse me, they can stay with us throughout their pregnancy and up to three months after they give birth. And this program, not a lot of people know about, so we need to come about. And make sure that we just mentioned to you all, and I also have some researchers, and we're going to, I guess if we got a last name.
Chief, I know you had talked about the drug epidemic and how it is such the biggest problem that we are seeing in our counties, and that's what we're here to do. We are here to help, we are here to stop this problem. Women that are pregnant are, we're seeing more and more of kids going to SIDS, kids going into the foster care system, and we're trying to stop that. We are trying to make these women become clean, provide them with housing, provide them with jobs, and provide them with ways to stay healthy, so they can raise their children and keep the foster care system down, because that is growing drastically. So our women can stay up to nine months, ninety days postpartum. We have eight beds available, we have beds available now, so if you know anyone.
And they can bring you up if they have two children.
Yes. If they also have children, they can keep two children in the home with them under the age of three. So if you know anyone who is in aid, please get the word out, we're, we will travel, we give them full doctor visits, we make sure they have all the necessities they need to have a, a healthy life and for these children. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Your comments, we appreciate it.